And at 5:30 for Commissioner Rose, entertain a motion going to closed session pursuant to North Carolina general statute 143, 31811a6. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Schiff, seconded by...
Second.
Commissioner Farrell, those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously with three members present.
Evening, I'm calling to order a continuation of meeting of the town of Pittsburgh Board of Commissioners for Monday, October 24th. We have come forward from a five o'clock close session and welcome you and to this meeting today. We generally start our meetings with a moment of silence, and so let us do that. Thank you. I would like to invite to come forward three members of the Boy Scout troop number ninety-three of the town of Pittsburgh. This troop has been celebrated since past weekend, the seventy-fifth anniversary of the existence of their troop. And the most interesting thing about these young men is that they will lead our pledge of allegiance, and they are all three named Brayden. And so there was an amusing moment in the in the back where people perhaps referred to them as the Brayden Bunch. Yes, that was not original, and I'm sure you've never heard that before. But young men, if you will come to the area for the where the microphone is.
Please remove all nonreligious headgear and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll now say the Scout Oath. On my honor, I will do my best to do my duty to God and my country, to obey the Scout law, to help other people at all times, to keep myself physically strong, mentally awake, and morally straight. Now the Scout Law. A scout is trustworthy, loyal, helpful, friendly, courteous, kind, obedient, cheerful, thrifty, brave, clean, and reverent. Now the slogan, be prepared. Do bits are new.
Thank you very much. These these scouts are working towards their communications act, which is one of the twenty-one badges that are required for Eagle. And it is an interesting statistic that they have just come through this weekend in celebration of seventy-five, noting that there were eighty Eagle Scouts that have been complicated, shall we say, through Trip ninety-three in those seventy-five years.
And one of whom was the mayor's son.
And one of them was, and one of them was the town attorney's son. Well. Thank you. You have the agenda before you. I will accept a motion for the agenda to be set either approving it as proposed or modification.
Um, may I? I'm not sure if this is the time, but I would like to just on the consent agenda, just for one clarification on number ten.
All right.
And
Shall we pull that off?
Number nine and number ten.
Number nine and ten. All right. Shall we pull those off, make them new business?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Very short, though, very short.
Very good. Other than that particular amendment, is there a motion to improve the agenda?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Farrell, seconded by Mayor for Tim Baldwin. Those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. At this time, we will have a motion, we will have the reading of a resolution recognizing the Chatham Marketplace. And Evan Diamond, if you'd join me at the at the podium.
How are you doing?
I'm well. This is a resolution recognizing the Chatham Marketplace for service to the town. Whereas Chatham Marketplace is a cooperative business located within the corporate limits of the town of Pittsburgh. And whereas Chatham Marketplace has provided healthy groceries and wellness products to the Pittsburgh area since it opened in May of two thousand six, and has grown into a bustling hub for the community. And whereas Chatham Marketplace and the town of Pittsburgh entered into a partnership effective December first, two thousand twenty-one, to distribute filtered water to the town of Pittsburgh water customers at no cost to the customer. And whereas the free water program ended September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, once the town of Pittsburgh's granular activated carbon advanced filtration system was optional, was operational. And whereas between December first, two thousand twenty-one, and September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, Chatham Marketplace distributed forty-six thousand eight hundred and nineteen gallons of filtered water through seven thousand four hundred and ten transactions. Now therefore be it resolved that the town of Pittsburgh Commissioners on behalf of the town and its residents meet this day to honor and extend gratitude to the management and staff of Chatham Marketplace for their service to the town through this filtered water program. This resolution was approved at the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners for the town of Pittsburgh held on December, October twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two, which resolution shall be entered in the town's public records and copies sent to the officials of Chatham Marketplace. Adopted this the twenty-fourth day of October, two thousand twenty-two, it will be signed Adopted this the twenty-fourth day of October, two thousand twenty-two, it will be signed by me as mayor and Paul Messick as interim town clerk. And I will deliver a copy to you personally.
That'd be lovely. Thank you so much.
And thank you for your service.
Of course. Happy to do it.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks, Doc.
And if I could have Colby Sawyer join me at the podium. Oh, you did not. Colby Sawyer is being recognized tonight with respect to his service to the Town of Pittsburgh. Whereas Colby W. Sawyer is employed with the Town of Pittsburgh as the Public Information Officer and Emergency Manager. And whereas Colby W. Sawyer has this year earned recognition from the International Association of Emergency Managers by being among the group of professionals designated Certified Emergency Manager, or CEM. And whereas this is the highest honor of professional achievement available from the association, which has a membership of more than six thousand emergency managers, whose goals are saving lives and protecting property and the environment during emergencies and disasters. And whereas the designation of Certified Emergency Manager is presently held by only two thousand two hundred and seven men and women in the emergency management field, and as a CEM, Colby W. Sawyer demonstrated a high level of competence and ethical fitness for emergency management. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor and Board of Commissioners for the Town of Pittsburgh recognizes Colby W. Sawyer for receiving the designation as Certified Emergency Manager. Adopted this twenty-fourth day of October, two thousand twenty-two. Congratulations.
So much.
Absolutely.
Congratulations.
It's so pleasant to do, celebrate during things like that, so. The first matter on our agenda, our citizens' matters, and there is a slot for manager update, but since our manager is not with us today, I don't know if there is any report to be had. In that case, we'll then proceed to the mayor and commissioners' updates. I had the pleasure of being a participant in a water seminar last week. On October the nineteenth, I spent all day in Broadway, North Carolina, being taught very important things about communities, small communities like ours that have distressed water. Now, many of you have signed up for, and some of you, I think, have already listened to your online version. But it was a real pleasure to be there in person with other mayors and commissioners, and and it was an educational day, and and we thoroughly enjoyed our time together. And of course, it was a requirement by the state of North Carolina that we attend to, but it was a really very, very informative situation. Also, over the weekend, I had the pleasure of attending the community dinner at the plant, which was just the most amazing show of community outpouring for for not only our town restaurants, but also as a fundraiser for the Quilmager Cafe, which is trying to open here in Pittsburgh, and it's going to be a cafe, which is a pay-as-you-can eating establishment. And so it was just amazing to see over two hundred people lined up down the pathway in the middle of the the plant to enjoy just wonderful food and to also support a good cause. Those are my updates for for today, and so Mayor Proton Baldwin, do you have anything to report on?
No, I do not, but on Wednesday, I do have Triangle J Council of Governments meeting. And and it again is a public forum, so anyone who would like to can certainly be part of that meeting. That's all I have.
Right. Commissioner Barnes?
Nothing to report.
Commissioner Farrell?
Nothing.
Commissioner Shipp?
Yes, on October twelfth, I attended the Chamber of Commerce State of Chatham event, and a lot of really interesting data that they presented there, nothing future looking, but things, you know, just stats about Chatham County and lots of Pittsburgh specifically, and I sent that data out to you guys, so encourage you to look through it. On Thursday, October eighteenth, I attended the Be Great Breakfast for the Boys and Girls Club here. And also on October eighteenth was the one-year anniversary of the club being open in Pittsburgh. On October nineteenth, we had the EDC update, and again, lots of things happening that they don't tell us about. But likely more news coming soon, and also the county did officially approve the incentives for the Vins Fast and the Wolf Speed projects at their last meeting. On Saturday, I attended a home dedication for Habitat for Humanity. And it was the first dedication they had in about three years, be able to have in person. And they have done either twelve or thirteen houses completed since then without being able to do a dedication. So the the home was for the Pavone Villalobos family, and they prepared an amazing meal for all of us that attended that, too. So that was really neat. This this Friday, I'm attending a training about citizen boards and how to use them. And then Monday, Halloween, I had the second part of the training about distressed units. And the online portion so far, I wasn't able to attend in person, but I also found it really valuable and really, e- even though we're not all required to do it, I would encourage us all to do it. We have a scholarship for the training cost, and there's some videos in there specifically talk about other communities that have gone through regionalization or are trying to regionalize, and I thought that was really helpful to hear, so.
Great. Well, one of the delightful things about being there in person was I walked in the front door, and there was John Potte, our former Public Works Director, who was there to greet me, and that was just really wonderful to see John again since his retirement. Commissioner Barnes, I believe you you have a new a new community update.
I do. Thursday for that, Thursday, I'll be at the Chamber of Commerce meeting and retreat. That's this week. Tuesday, the eighteenth, I did the Arts Council meeting, nothing to report for Pittsburgh there. On the nineteenth, I was here for the Hall River Assembly's presentation on the data from the NC State Blood Study. Thursday of last week, we had a Tarpaulin meeting, and nothing Pittsburgh or Pittsburgh related to report. But I do have a meeting scheduled with Carol Fuller about how I can better maybe speak towards Pittsburgh's problems or issues. And then I also made it to the community dinner last Sunday out at the plant, and that was a really great time.
Great. All right. And we have we have public comment next, and is there anyone who has signed up for public comment? No, there is. All right. Next thing we pardon? Okay. Jennifer Flatt? All right, Jennifer, the board would like to hear from you now. It is public comment time.
Thank you. Good evening. Can you hear me?
We can.
Great. So I will keep this very, very short, I promise. A year ago, two hundred and six residents from Pittsburgh participated in the federally funded study being conducted at NC State, where we gave up our blood, and they assessed the PFAS levels in our blood. Most of us got our results last week, and this study was done over a thousand participants up and down the Cape Fear River Basin. And of the three different areas where they surveyed, Pittsburgh residents had the highest median levels of each compound in their blood. I even had, I I who have worked so hard to reduce my exposures drinking safe water, filtered water, and being super careful, my levels were high as well. Um, so, you know, clearly, we're making some progress with our water treatment plant and the the carbon option. But it is becoming clearer and clearer to me that we really need to continue to exert pressure on our upstream dischargers. Because if we continue to look at the city of Sanford's water supply as an option, it's not going to be an even any better situation. Sanford doesn't have any treatment processes in place to minimize their levels and their discharge, which is actually upstream of their intake. Um, so, and their dischargers are different than the ones that we're dealing with right now. So it would be same song, different verse. And I just wanted to to say that we really need to continue exerting pressure on the the upstream users. That is all I have for my comments tonight, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for your comments, Jennifer Flatt. We'll move next then to the consent agenda. We have already slightly amended the consent agenda by removing number nine and number ten, the minutes and the Town of Pittsburgh GFL contract. But other than the removal of those two to new business, is there a motion to approve the remainder of the items on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Move back, Commissioner Shipp.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Vose. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion carries unanimously. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank our town clerk. Carrie has brought the minutes up to date, and no small task, and has lived and breathed minutes from prior meetings of the boards and commissioners. So it is a great pleasure, but I thank you for completing that task. All right. We have no public hearings tonight, but we do have old business. We have a gentleman named Reed Barton, who is with us this evening to report on the granulated granular activated carbon performance update. Thank you, Reed Barton.
All right, Colby, is the PowerPoint available? Okay. So this should be a pretty positive, short presentation about the good that's coming out of the GAC system that's installed at the water plant. So you can go to the next slide, Colby.
Reed, could I ask you to come just a little bit closer to the mic?
Yes.
I just want to be sure that those who are watching online.
I will, I will lean in here. Okay, so one background slide, just to make sure everybody, even folks online, are up to speed. So Pittsburgh owns a two million gallon a day conventional surface water treatment plant. It takes water out of the Hall River and treats it using a what we call a conventional process. The the use of the word conventional means that it doesn't have advanced, what we call advanced treatment. In the Hall River, as as everyone knows, we have problems with PFAS compounds and one four dioxide. The Town and CDM Smith worked together to complete a study in two thousand twenty that looked at our options for treating the water. From that, some recommendations came forward and in initiated towards almost at the end of twenty, really, it started in two thousand twenty-one, the summer of two thousand twenty-one, equipment was purchased, equipment that takes a year to manufacture. We began construction in, it was either November or December of two thousand twenty-one, and completed construction this summer of a granular activated carbon system that will treat up to one point five million gallons a day. Go to the next slide for me, Colby. So this is the, you know, definitely a celebration. This slide memorializes that as of August twenty-fifth this year, the GAC system shown in this picture was in full operation and treating the water that was coming through the the Pittsburgh Water Treatment Plant. Activated carbon is acts in to, I won't use too many technical terms, but uses an absorption process, almost like a magnet, and holds on to the PFAS. It also removes a number of other contaminants that could potentially be in the water, such as pesticides or anything like that. It's a great treatment process, and it fits within the category of treatment that we refer to as advanced treatment. So Pittsburgh's conventional water treatment now, water treatment plant now has an advanced treatment process on the tail end of it, which is great news. Next slide, Colby. So so how well is it treating? This, these are fantastic results. So the goal, when we when we completed the study and began design, the goal was to achieve at least ninety percent removal of PFOS and PFOA, which are two of the more problematic PFAS compounds that have known health concerns. So the first one, looking on this table, PFOA, which we don't, we don't have to go into the long names. PFOA was in the raw waters, is in the Hall River, showing up at the water plant at eighteen point eight nanograms per liter. After the carbon system treatment process, it was less than one point five nine two nanograms per liter at a just just under ninety-seven percent removal. So fantastic result. The next one, PFOS, was a ninety-six point five four percent removal. The next one, PFOSA, was non-detect. That's great news to start, you know, just great news in general. PFNA was much lower to start with, but knocked down also just about ninety-six percent. And then the last line here, PFDA, was knocked down to a non-detect, ND stands for non-detect, it means it went below our ability to measure it. So whenever it goes below that, we just call it ninety-nine point nine. We we can't. In science, you can rarely say a hundred percent. So that is great results, and that's the results I'm expecting to see every day. What, you can go to the next slide, Colby. So what's next for the town? Couple things. The town is currently in pursuit of state revolving fund grants and loans to expand this PFAS system that we just saw a picture of. It's currently sized for one and a half MGD, which was the limits that the town had in finances to pay for it quickly. So we want to move it all the way to two million gallons a day, right up from one point five. And we will be, we're also pursuing funding for a ultraviolet system at the plant, would add a second advanced treatment process that would be aimed at removing one four dioxide in the water. So at the water plant, day in and day out, they're monitoring the PFAS, and when the GAC starts to diminish in its treatment ability, they will order replacement activated carbon and replace it. So those vessels are filled up with carbon. That carbon runs until it's exhausted, and then it will be changed out. So that's something that the staff in in the utilities department monitor and and will stay ahead on. And and you go to the next slide for me, Colby. So this is my last slide, and certainly if there's any questions, I'll I'll be happy to answer them. The two applications for funding that are currently pending with the state, one of them is to expand the PFAS, the current PFAS treatment system, the GAC system, to expand it all the way to two million gallons a day, and to add a a sister treatment process called ion exchange. The price tag on that Um, the price tag on that project is estimated to be uh a little over five and a half million. And that was, uh, that's what the application is for. Certainly, we hope to maximize grant potential for the town. We, we know these projects are not cheap projects. Uh, we won't hear back on the funding for that until this coming February, uh when the state, uh so uh, the state received, uh, I believe it was over six hundred applications for municipalities and public water systems for funding. They've, they've got a lot of funding, but that's a lot of applications. So Pittsburgh is competing for that funding. Um, and they're reviewing the applications now. In the same process, uh, the ultraviolet system that would be uh used to treat one four dioxide also had an application submitted. The, the construction and project cost related to that is estimated a little over twelve million dollars. Um, this has already been submitted one time before. It was submitted back in April. Uh, it, it was, uh, Pittsburgh was on the bubble. They receive, you receive partial funding, you receive five hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant, but short of the twelve million needed. So we resubmitted that application for additional funding. When I say on the bubble, you were uh the score that your funding application received was on the line between projects that got fully funded or where the funding ran out and only partially funded. So that's why the project was partially funded. Um, so happy to answer any questions about, about any of this or anything the board wants to hear about with water.
Questions for Reed Barton?
Yeah, if you, well, one, one note first of all is that um the town of Greensboro did send a letter of support along with those applications.
They did.
Um, so appreciate that. Um, from, from what we've seen so far, do you have any indication yet of how soon the GAC media will need to be replaced? Or is that too difficult to?
Um, it's, it's not too difficult to know. I, I don't recall off the top of my head. Bill, I see you're online. Do you recall off the top of your head? It, the, the answer is it's an order of months. It, it, I, I believe it is around four to six months, but if, if I would say, uh.
I, I know it depends on incoming water and.
It depends on, on much of variables. We tested it and a- at the test level, which is different than a full scale level. I believe it was uh six months or less.
Okay, and, and then as a distressed unit, I believe that helps us in the SRF funding process. Is that correct?
It does. It, it, it puts you in line for different buckets of money. So the uh, the state revolving fund program is, is a general term, but, but really within the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, there is a subdivision called DWI or Division of Water Infrastructure. And they, they are the managers of state and federal funding for water projects. And so whether it's ARPA money that's been given to the state to issue or the most recent, as of last November, the bipartisan infrastructure law that was passed, that money comes to the state. And the state also has other buckets of money, and they take applications every six months, and they look at all the applications, they rank them. Um. And you compete against your peers for that money. Um, but when you have a distressed rating, you uh are able to compete for some different pots of money that you wouldn't be able to otherwise. So uh in short, it increases your chances of grant versus just loans.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Other questions for Reed Barton?
Good numbers, good numbers.
They're good numbers. Yeah, it's great news.
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I'm pleased to report that the um next agenda item is um is uh which is the town representative to the Chadon County Chamber of Commerce. Uh, Commissioner Vos has stepped in and um and has said that that would be something that would really be very interesting to him. And as the newest commissioner, we welcome his involvement in that. Um, and um, and, and so you're looking, you're getting in just at a perfect time so that you're gonna be looking at the goals and viewpoints of, of your fellow commissioners um, or fellow board members. So it's um exciting times, and we look forward to your report.
Thank you.
Um, we, yes.
I think that was slated for action.
Yes.
Shall I make a motion?
That would be excellent.
I move that Commissioner Vos be appointed to the Chadon County Chamber of Commerce.
Second.
Motion by John Monas, seconded by Jay Farrell. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. And to prove that we did not do any arm twisting, Commissioner Vos voted for his own. Thank you. And thank you for, for reminding me what, that we need to do that. Uh, the next matter of old business is the appointment of the Board of Adjustment. And I am delighted to tell you that we are almost there. Uh, our town attorney, Mr. Messick, had indicated that we needed to have a total of five people, three in town, two from the extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction, and we have accomplished that. We have in-town representatives who have um with or without arm twisting, consented to having their names brought forward tonight. We have Walter Harris, otherwise known as Corky. Uh, we have Lee Anna Forjay. Uh, Commissioner Vos had um had communication with her, and she is uh very interested in serving. And Sarah Carr. Uh, Sarah Carr has served the town of Pittsburgh on the Recreation Advisory Board for a number of years, has cycled off of that and has consented to uh to take on the Board of Adjustment position as the in-town representative. Uh, from the ETJ, and these uh Paul Messick reminds us need to be approved by the county commissioners at their next meeting. Um, Ray Bland, who formerly was the Planning Board Chairman for the town, and Johnny Richardson. Uh, Johnny was very pleased to serve again, uh and served years ago on the Board of Adjustment. And um the alter, uh, the alternates, um, we have one more place to fill. We have uh an ETJ alternate. Uh, Shannon Plummer was delighted to be asked. Uh, Shannon served for many years on the um, on the planning board as well and is recently the retired owner of Al's Restaurant Diner. And um, so we've given him something to occasionally do in his, in his dedication retirement. Uh, we are still needing an in-town representative. And uh, so I have had conversations with several people. Uh, Oakley Bennett, unfortunately, uh who we thought might be a good uh member that was mentioned at the last meeting, Oakley uh said that he did not wish to serve. So um, so we, I believe, have enough constituted so that we could proceed with the election or appointment of the, those particular people and get the matter on the agenda that needs to yet be heard. Is that, would that be correct, Paul?
Uh, yes, ma'am. And step two would be to, to figure out who gets what terms.
Yes, and um, and several people asked about that. Um, so uh, uh, one person would be a one-year term, two people would be two-year terms, and two people would be three-year terms. And I think we could just go down the list and just um assign those um uh without prejudice or favor. And um, and then each of the alternates, uh one would serve two years and one to serve three. So uh Shannon could serve two, and then whoever we get as our in-town representative could serve three. Uh, but we've, I've spoken to a number of people in the community who were very pleased to be asked um to serve on this board, but um uh, but declined because of various things, sick parents, aging, um, those kinds of things. So, um, would the board feel that it would be appropriate to um um to designate Walter Harris with, with a one-year term and uh Lee Anna Forjay as a two-year term and Sarah Carr as a three-year term? And Ray Bland. Let's see, how is that going to work? As a two-year and Johnny Richardson as a three-year?
Yes.
That sounds like it would work well.
We need a motion to go ahead of that.
Yes, we need a motion.
So move.
Thank you. Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Pam Baldwin, seconded by Commissioner Vos. Is there further discussion on this slate? Wonderful. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously.
I, I think you all cut off the alternate, so probably a separate motion for Shannon.
Oh, thank you. Okay. Um, so I think we say Shannon would be two years and then whoever we find uh to fill the in-town alternate would be a three-year term. Could we have a motion to that then?
Yes, motion to appoint Shannon Plummer to the, as the alternate for the ETJ for the Board of Adjustments for a term of two, two years.
Excellent. Is there a second to Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim's motion?
Second.
Secondly, by Commissioner Shipp, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries as to the alternates for the Board of Adjustment. Is there anything else we need to do for that matter? Thank you.
That's it.
Very good. Uh, with respect to new business, we have two items brought forward from the consent agenda. Um, the first of all was the minutes of June the ninth, twenty twenty-two, joint meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. And uh Commissioner Farrell, did you have some questions about that?
I didn't really have any questions. I just wanted to make sure that we were aware of this statement. Um, as everyone's aware, the, you know, the county is building office buildings out on Renaissance Drive. And in our, in our meeting in June tonight, I will read what the county commissioner said. I want to just make sure this is on the record. So if we need this down the road, we got something to come back to. It says, Miss Lamontagane suggested that the Dunlap Old Agriculture and Annex Buildings be returned to the town, and if cleared, the space could be utilized, utilized for other opportunities like farmers' markets and emphasizes that is a great location in downtown. Uh, that also to me seems like office space for some of our people too, if necessary. So I think we need to possibly take advantage of when uh they move out of town.
Yes.
So could we then make a motion that uh that the Board has not only approved these minutes, but has taken note of that particular part that was read by Commissioner Farrell for the purposes of
The record.
The record. Thank you.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Could we have that motion? Would you like to make that motion?
Uh, yes, I'd like to make the motion to uh accept this uh quote to the uh minutes for the record.
And to approve the minutes for June ninth.
Yes, and approve the minutes.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Secondly, by Commissioner Vos, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion carries hands. And the other matter that we brought forward from the consent agenda for new business was actually old business, probably. Um, but it's the town of Pittsburgh GFL contract renewal for five years with additions for increasing recycling and adding uh yard waste. Did you have an uh a matter that you wanted to bring?
Um, yeah, well, it's, I know we've talked about this long enough, and I don't want to get into uh it too in depth. But uh, I just really want to know that, I mean, really want the public to know that, that I was not in favor of the recycling, raising the uh sixty-five gallon to ninety-five gallon plus the uh increase for taxpayers. And I was not in favor of this, the waste, solid waste collection containers. Um, I thought we was under understanding that we would possibly stay like we were until we uh had a little further agreement. I don't know, I'm not, but I just want for the record that I'm not in favor of this agreement.
Well, right now, that agreement, uh, that particular matter has not been approved by this board. So um, is there?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we extend the contract for two years unchanged with no additions to service.
You've heard the motion by Commissioner Bonnet. Is there a second to this motion?
I can second that.
Commissioner, Commissioner Farrell seconds that. Uh, is there any more discussion the board wishes to have?
Yes. Um, so I, I think, uh, Carrie, I appreciate you providing the information that in the last three months, we had a hundred and six calls for service for yard waste pickup. Uh, so that, that's in addition to anything that our staff is driving around picking up on their own. Um, that's, uh, you know, a call to office staff to dispatch other staff to go pick up yard waste, uh, which we currently do uh as a part of our budget. So. You good?
Yes. Really difficult one.
Okay, okay.
Um.
So, so we currently, we currently offer yard waste pickup as a portion of our budget that is unknown. Uh, I believe that two dollars and forty-eight cents a month would be a cost savings for the taxpayers. Uh, and it would also improve staff safety, which is why I'm in favor of that. Um, also, I'm surprised that we wouldn't be interested in increased recycling opportunities. Uh, that is ninety cents per month to uh put more recycling in the recycling bins and less in the, the trash bins. Uh, so I'm, I'm not in favor of uh the motion.
Are there speakers to the motion?
Uh, I think, I think all of us are tired of talking about this.
Um. That too.
And I think that uh we've got so much on our plates right now. I don't feel like even the extent that we have talked about it, we've given it proper deference and attention. And I think that in two years, we're going to be in a much better situation to reevaluate it. Perhaps at that point, we won't have utilities on our plate. And we'll have uh greater comfort to dive deeper into things like this and, and uh seek to maximize recycling, maximize waste reduction uh and perhaps uh minimize costs on uh ratepayers. Uh, I'm very sympathetic to Commissioner Farrell's concerns. And um, just don't believe that we need to be uh increasing rates right now. So. I'd like to stick with what we're doing and revisit in two years.
Anything else?
Just, just to that point, it's a good point. This is the, the fourth meeting that we've talked about, the, the disposal contract. Um, and I think that's more meeting time than we've given many other larger things. And I don't think it's the right move to, to kick the can down the road for two years. Um, I, I think it's a good opportunity to uh improve the services that we offer citizens.
I am actually in agreement with the increase. But in order to get this contract done, I can, I can move forward with that motion.
Okay. Sir.
When we talked about this previously, wasn't one of the options on the table to just leave it alone with no contract and change nothing?
It, it's not no, uh, we, we currently don't have a contract because we haven't done anything.
Well, I'm just saying, I think this seems better than that is what I was going to say.
Well, right, the, the option for two years is extending the current contract for two years, which is what has been done since twenty eleven. But there's a delay this time because we've been talking about it for so long.
Well, and part of it might be too because of the transition of the county manager. I know there was a lot on everybody's plate just as that transfer was, was happening. on everybody's plate, just as that transfer was, was happening. Um, and, um, and then I would like to just note that, yes, there were a hundred and however many calls uh, for picking up yard waste, but we just had a hurricane. So, um, I, um, I would just note that for just general information. So you've heard the motion, uh, by Commissioner Barnes, seconded by Commissioner Farrell. If there's no more discussion, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
Nay.
The motion carries four to one, Commissioner Shipp voting in the negative. At this point, we are now moving to, the, the Board would like to go, has been asked to go into closed session by the town attorney. Um, closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen eleven A three. And, um, and that closed session, could I have a motion for the Board to go into closed session?
So move.
Move by Commissioner Farrell.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Rose. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And Mayor Perry, I'm noting that Jenny Phelps has her hand raised. I don't know if that's relevant.
Very much. Jenny Phelps?
Yes, hi. Uh, my video won't turn on. That's okay. I just had a couple of things. I was gonna speak on the miscellaneous part just really quick. Um, I'm sorry. It's last minute.
For those who are in attendance, this is the, um, inter, uh, interim planning director who is, uh, asked to speak here.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I just wanted to give you all a couple of updates. Um, since last meeting, I gave you a presentation on our land use plan update. So we do have our community meeting scheduled. It's going to be November fifteenth at the old Ag Building, which is sixty-five East Chatham Street. So it's next to the, um, or behind the Annex Building for Chatham County and next to the Dunlap. So we have two sessions. They're going to be the same and we're offering a couple of times so that we can hopefully get as many people as possible to be able to attend. The times are from three to four thirty and then again from six to seven thirty. And we also just got, just received the, uh, survey translated into Spanish. So once our consultant gets that input into Survey Monkey, we'll be sure to include that and send that out. The close date for that is, uh, November thirteenth, and then we will possibly open it up for a few days after that. And then, um, I'm putting together some additional text amendments to bring you all. And I had a potential citizen, uh, inquire about wanting to open an RV park. And in looking through our U D O, we don't have any uses that would match it properly for RV parks or camp sites. So you can, you all can send me an email on your thoughts if you didn't have time to do it right now. But, um, if you think it's something that you would like to see, or if anyone asked you about potentially having RV parks or camp sites within, um, within the town or within the E P J. That's all I have.
Thank you, Jenny. Does anybody have questions, Jenny Phelps? Thank you so much. We'll then, um, move to our, um, uh, to our closed session. I would like to, to recognize Matt Thorpe, who is with our scouts tonight. Um, the, the three Brandon's, Brayden's and, um, uh, and Max, uh, Assistant, uh, Scout Master with, with Trip ninety-three. Thank you for coming with the gentlemen this evening and, um, and gentlemen, we appreciate having you at our, at our, at our meeting. I hope you learned a little bit about town government and the people who represent your families. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
I think we have to stay in this room for the closed session because of the election, uh, taking place down. No, we don't. Okay? We have.
Oh, good.
Great, thank you. Great, thank you.